Okay, I text Fiore. I haven't gotten a response, so I'm gonna get the meeting started. I believe we have four of them. We have three members or voting members with Tim Allen, Lindsey Hackett and myself. So if there's no objections, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the REO Committee. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We have a couple of guests today that aren't typically with us. And so, but to get things started, may I have, I believe, all the relevant information has been sent out, including the minutes by Maureen up here. We appreciate her support and help. Tim or Lindsey, would either one of you like to make a motion except minutes from the previous meetings?
Sure, I make a motion.
Tim, can I get a second?
Yeah, yeah, second.
All in favor, hearing no questions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna jump right into it for the sake of everybody's time. And I'd liked, I've had the pleasure of meeting this lady, a young lady, earlier today and one of her, and the gentleman that she'll be working with as well. And I'm just, Fontaine has a great track record of trying to do the right thing in terms of construction and compliance with our ordinance. So I'm going to stop and allow for Liz Wamboue and Dave Brayhart to introduce themselves properly to you, the members of the committee. And in fact, first, they have met me, so I'm gonna ask everybody on the, before they start, to do just a short introduction of who you are to our new guests, so that they know who who they're talking to. So if obviously, this meeting is being hosted with the support and assistance of Focus Springfield. So we thank Brendan Holland and Focus Springfield for his work. But Maureen, could you just introduce yourself and then we'll work our way around through the entire group as well? Maureen? Not really. The volume's too low. Okay, anyway, well, Maureen Bear is a member of the city, the staff that supports us. She does the minutes and we appreciate her support as well. And we thank her. Tim, could you introduce yourself, please, as a member of the committee?
Am I muted? No.
No, you're all set.
All right. Hi, welcome to joining us. Thanks for joining us at our committee. I'm Tim Allen. I'm a member of the Springfield City Council. And I'm a ward councilor. I represent Ward Seven, which is Plum Tree Road, South Ranch Parkway, out that way, kind of East Forest Park and Outer Belt. Thank you, welcome.
Lindsey, please.
Thanks. I'm Lindsey Hackett. I'm the deputy capo for the city and thanks for joining us.
Che, please.
I'm Chase Swan. I work with the Compliance Office for the city. I'm a senior project manager. Thank you for joining us.
Hope Button, please.
Hi, sorry, my video still isn't working, but Liz and Dave know what I look like. We've met, so welcome. I'm also a senior project manager in the compliance department.
And Lisa Clausen, if you would, please.
Sure. Hi, everybody. And Liz, good to see you again. Lisa Clausen, Carpenter Union.
President of the Carpenter Union, Mr. Charlie Payne. You're muted.
Yep. Hello, everybody. I'm Charlie Payne. I'm a business rep organizer with the Carpenter Union based in Springfield.
And Frank, I'm not exactly sure. Would you like to introduce yourself, sir?
Sure. I'm Frank Pear. I'm the senior project manager for Fontaine Brothers for the new project at Berry. I'm working with Dave and Liz.
Okay, Dave and Liz, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Melvin. I'm Dave Brayhart. I'm the onsite project manager for Fontaine or the Berry Projects as well.
Liz, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Yes. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Liz Wamboue. I'm the director of diversity, inclusion and community impact. I'm on week three of joining the team and I'm really glad to be here with you all. For some of you, we've already met and I'm looking to forward to meeting everyone that I haven't yet. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I've had the pleasure of meeting Dave and Liz earlier today. Got a proper introduction and I want to welcome them as well. I'm not gonna waste anybody's time. Let's get into it. Review. I have on the agenda here the continued review of the REO utilization form for the month of May, June of 21. I believe the documents already been sent out and then for review of those of the member of the committee. Lindsey, Tim, do you have any comments or questions? Or should I just allow either Hope or Che to give us an overview? How about we start with Hope or either Che, either one of you, whichever is most comfortable, giving us an overview of what we're looking at?
Well, you've got two months. You've got May and June. Obviously, the REO didn't meet last month. But Brightwood Lincoln is wrapping up. My understanding is they're in the process of moving the furniture into the building. It's going to be ready to be open next month, the end of next month when school starts. The numbers, I mean, there's some slight changes, but pretty much they've been pretty consistent over the last several months. So I think certainly there will be at least one more monthly utilization form on this project. But I don't expect those numbers to change with any kind of severity. Pretty much, I think these are our final numbers. And as I said, they've been pretty consistent over the last several months. Looking at June's form, you know, we're at thirty point six seven percent residents, twenty eight point eleven percent minority, six point eight eight percent women, which is a slight there was a slight loss there that took us under the six point nine goal, but, you know, certainly not by much. And, you know, the veterans are in excess of six percent. So I think that these numbers are essentially going to be the final the final numbers that we're gonna be talking about on this project. Last meeting, you had the benefit of Frank Amaro coming in, who was O'Connell and Sons rep on this project. I think he, for those of you that were able to attend, I think he summarized the project pretty well. Che, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add to that?
No, I think Frank summarized it well when we had our last meeting.
Okay. Tim or Lindsey, either one of you to jump in there if you have any questions or comments?
The only question I have, Hope or Che, is what, I know we still have July to go and I do believe the building will be completed in August. How much would we expect these numbers to change, if at all?
I don't expect them to change at all, really. Like I said, there might be a tenth, a tenth of a percent or something changed one way or the other, but these, to me, these are essentially the numbers.
I would concur and the only reason why, not the only, the only reason why there was a dip at the end is because once they started going to punch list items, subs are coming off the project. So some of the numbers are obviously coming off the project once they go to punch list. However, those numbers were steady until next time.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, I had listed as the next agenda item was the discussion of the final numbers for Brightwood, but it's pretty much you're saying is what we have is what we can expect minus my note change where you're there when July, because they're really, subs are leaving. So that kind of really answers that question. If it's not, if there's no objections, because we do have monitoring from outside sources or guests, we usually have interest, but before I even get to that, Hope, Che, could you give us any comment as to where the numbers are low at? An explanation of what, why, you know, we can, why these numbers are not, where we would anticipate them to be? And your final comments as to the process where it's been most difficult and where we can do better at or have an expectation doing better?
Good. No, you can start. I'll piggyback off you.
Oh, okay. Well, essentially, you know, you're talking about two columns. I mean, you've exceeded your numbers on veterans and minorities, significantly exceeded. Certainly, as it relates to minorities. You know, in minorities, the goal is twenty percent. The latest numbers to date are twenty eight point eleven. So what's that, a forty percent exceeding that goal? Veterans, everyone we've talked, that I've talked to, I won't speak for Che, but I think he'll agree with me that for some reason, some veterans don't like to self-report, to self-identify as veterans. I don't know if they don't wanna feel like they're getting a handout or something because they're, you know, they're only getting on the job because they're veterans or whatever. I don't know the answer to that, but, but I think that you can, you can do your own research if you want, but that for some reason, not insignificant number of veterans don't like to self-identify as veterans.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, so that number is probably higher than the six percent. But in any event, that, that goal was reached. So we're talking about women and we're talking about Springfield residents. The women, the goal is six point nine percent. The end of June, we're at six point eight eight percent. That is very close.
At six point nine.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna round, round up at six point nine, but, you know, it is six point eight eight. So, yeah, I mean, at different points in this project, the numbers were higher for women. And it just, if they got taken off to get on other projects or just their, their specific work, whatever, women that were on the crew was no longer there. But I consider that a success, which leaves us with residents. And we were less than five percent off that number. Again, referring back to the last meeting we had when Frank Amaro was present and able to answer any questions or provide some insight. You know, this, this project had to deal with the fact that, you know, the vast majority of the project was done in the middle of a pandemic. I'm hopeful that the projects, as they go forward, will meet and/or exceed the numbers for Springfield residents. But I also think that the committee, the city, the state, the nation as a whole, needs to start really focusing on supplying that workforce. You know, does Springfield have that workforce available in these skilled trades to meet those numbers? We're certainly doing our best to get there. But it's a struggle. It's, I think the residency is going to be a struggle. It has always been a struggle and it's gonna continue to be a struggle. But all things considered, and I know that there are certain members of this committee that have pointed out historically that, you know, that the numbers weren't met on this one, but I personally, looking at this and knowing what I know from working with this committee for six years now, I consider this project a success.
So I'd just like to piggyback off of and just add value to what Hope was intimating. Speaking to the women, you have childcare issues, you have COVID as far as that's concerned, and then as far as the residents are concerned and can piggyback on the women's point where you have a labor force that's getting paid more not to work than to work in a pandemic as well, because you're getting added benefits on top of the unemployment benefit. So those were barriers added to the project as well, coupled with COVID. So I think those barriers won't be there as prevalent for projects going forward. So I think you can actually take those out of the mix as far as future projects are concerned.
Actually, I appreciate the comments that were just made. And in fact, I think this is a good point, a good time for either Frank, Liz and Dave to jump in and offer some of their comments, because they've had a chance to hear what some of the numbers are. They see that there is a general satisfaction that we're getting, we're closer to where we wanna be, but we haven't reached perfection yet. And hearing what was being discussed related to residents, the obviously veterans. All of, I'm a veteran. Nobody knows I'm a veteran because I don't, I don't claim it. My military career wasn't such that I feel like I served my country and I don't see any value for me to say that I'm a veteran. And I don't. So everybody who serves makes their own determinations as to whether they wanna claim the label. Make no judgments about that. My, that's not really my concern, though. It's primarily, me personally, it's women. When we got involved with this many years ago, when I started delving into it, who's most poor in the city of Springfield, not by choice, it's usually single mothers. And, you know, being a CNA is a, is a honorable job. But being a CNA doesn't equate to a salary that allows you to have the option of owning a home and having the confidence that you can feed and maintain your family structure as opposed to jobs in the construction trade. So if Liz, Dave, from what you, and Frank, from what you've heard, I'd really appreciate hearing I mean, I mean, you have no crystal ball, but how difficult do you think or expect this is going to be for your ability to fulfill the proposed requirements of the ordinance?
And any of you? I'll jump in and then have Liz wrap, wrap in as well, but the residents will probably be the toughest component from what I see. But we have had some success early on already, where we've had folks from our neighborhood come to the job. We're working with the Charlie and the Carpenter Union and a laborers union. And actually, I think my superintendent reached out to Fiore with regards to the ironworkers to bring them on board. They know what is expected from the city of Springfield. And if they have the manpower and the people that live in that area, they will provide them for us. You know, we're asking upfront for them. The concrete crew is kind of the next batch of guys that come on. So we'll have labors and carpenters and ironworkers tie and rebar. So those are the, that's where we're gonna have our best successes, going to the unions and asking for their assistance. And, and I can tell you, we have it. So I think we'll be good there. But in general, it's usually the residents that I see is, is the hard, especially like when we had the, we don't have it now, but when we had the casino going on, I was involved with projects at UMass and the similar type of requirements, but only for, for Umba. We weren't able to grab the folks because they were busy at, at the MGM. But now that's passed and so I'm hoping and we're hopefully through this pandemic. So I think we're, we're trending where we need to be. We have professionals like Liz and Dave working with us, pushing it every, every step of the way. So I think we're gonna be, we'll either meet or exceed. Brightwood is our goal.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with everything that Frank has said. And one of the things that we developed is a walk-on application for folks, which will also live online. So as any of us are having a conversation with anyone at any given time, we're able to provide them access to this form where, you know, they will, you know, we certainly have the four major categories on the phone and so like, I mean, on the form. So they'll be able to self-identify, you know, right on the spot. One of the things that I've been doing, I tried to, trying to do my first few weeks here is make sure that I'm reaching out to unions and union leaders. So, you know, I've sat with Lisa, sat this morning with Charlie and will continue to do so to make those corrections, actually. Fiore also has an email in his inbox for me. So again, you know, these are some of the strategies that we'll, you know, continue to employ and be as visible as, as possible, right? And then hopefully, as we're coming out of this, you know, job fairs and things like that will hopefully start happening a little bit more often and in person.
Apologize. We are joined by the fourth member of the committee. Fiore is on his phone. He just left something in the chat. I believe his apprentice program is now available and for people who qualify to participate. Fiore, can you hear us? Would you like to chime in and share that information?
Yeah, so, so we did open our apprentice program back in January and because I'm the outskirts, they've allowed me throughout the years to pretty much take in anybody outside the realm of the normal apprentice program, which is, of course, we have to follow the guidelines of the state. But they are allowing me in to go outside that. We did not get a lot of interest from people in the area when we had our application process. I mean, I just made literally eleven phone calls this morning to anybody. I always mark to my phone, expressed an interest in, and then I try to do follow-ups, but it's a fine line to chase somebody, because when I'm chasing somebody, I'm asking them to be an ironworker. So, and three of those were women. In the apprentice, pre-apprentice program right now, there were three women that wanted to be ironworkers or expressed an interest. Yet I've never heard from all three of those. Hey, I'm gonna reach out to one of the teachers just to see what happened to them, if they got placed anywhere else. But again, anybody that's interested, I literally just took the kid in this morning. He's doing an OSHA ten. I got a job from tomorrow morning. So we do have work and I hate saying that, but we are looking for people out in Western Mass to join the ironworkers apprentice program at this time. So anybody's got any interest, just send them over. I'll give them my hour speech.
Actually, Fiore, I appreciate you sharing that when this meeting is over and then do some outreach on your behalf. And I'm gonna post it on my Facebook page as well and see if I can drum up. I got a neighbors, a couple of neighbors around here who are underemployed. I won't say they're unemployed, but they're underemployed. And I think this would be a great opportunity for them as well. So I appreciate you first, for you sharing that.
Melvin, can I just pipe in real quick?
Please, Hope, yes.
Yeah, I just did some real quick and dirty numbers here on the residents. And what I did was I took the total resident hours from the latest utilization, which was seventy four thousand four hundred ninety-eight working hours on this project, multiplied that by forty eight dollars, which is actually on the low end of the average of the skilled trades. And that pumped three point five million dollars into Springfield residents pockets. So just to put some context to, to those numbers, just wanted to throw that out there again. That was just a, a real quick and dirty kind of analysis. And again, I stayed conservative on the lower end, because a lot of these, a lot of these trades are paying, you know, up into the sixties, you know, sixty-four, sixty-seven bucks an hour. So even at a lower, say, apprenticeship level or whatever, that project put a lot of money into the city of Springfield residents pockets and, and into the city's economy as a, as a result.
Hope, that message needs to be also spread more often. I intend to, I won't have another general, I mean, another committee of the whole, I don't expect. And probably until September, and Tim probably can concur to that. But if you could send me that, that little snippet that you, in a form of an email, I'd like to include that as part of my report back to the committee of the whole. I don't think people quite appreciate all the work that's being done in the shadows and, and, and what you guys are helping me and Tim do. But I'd like to report that back. And, and you said it in such a very clear and concise way that I think even those who don't see the value or don't appreciate what we do, they can appreciate that, that number. And, and I think that sometimes we need to pat ourselves on the back, but, you know, we, we, we always, you know, so people are always so critical about what we do in the city of Springfield, but this, that's one of the more positive things that are going on. And there's a lot of positive things. So I'd really appreciate that. Fiore, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're, the general contractor's done talking, I do want to quickly give them a little tidbit. And this is actually even for the city to a certain degree as a whole. So if everybody's finished, I can give it now. If not, I'm in no rush. I'm not going anywhere.
Go ahead. Yeah, well, you know, I try to keep things as informal.
So Melvin, one of the things that I've seen happen, and they can attest to it, is pretty much the city is stuck with the lowest responsible bidder when it comes to, I believe there's thirteen file subbits. So the problem with a file subbit is they're gonna be stuck with no matter who it is. But at the end of the day, when the, so this is the part for the city, is that when these contractors are bidding these files of bids, they really have to get the message somehow in a little bit more bolder lettering that this is not a joke. If you're going to bid as a file sub bidder, our expectations are, and now we're, we're enforcing it. We have compliance officers. We are gonna be really looking at your hard numbers at the end of the day as a file sub bidder, which will at least take some of the pressure off the general contractor who's stuck with contractors that may or may not want to care about the REO in a whole. And then second, as a general contractor, of course, they're gonna look at what they can control and at that point, they have a little bit more flexibility to pick a contractor that they know can ultimately supply the numbers. But again, I'm not naive to think that cost doesn't play into effect there too. But at least it gives them a little bit more control as to when picking a non-file subbid. So just two points. How do we get those contractors, as I said, that are filed, sub bids to realize no more playing games in the city? You better start a Biden buy it if, if you're supposed to. That's all. Thanks.
I appreciate that. And Frank, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. I know there's not much the city can do in relation to this lowest file bid. That's the state law, so we can't subvert that. And I, but Frank, you're, you know, Fontaine has the reputation. You're starting a new project. You heard his comments. Is it just, would you like to comment on it or how would you receive what he just said?
He's right on the money there and with the file subbidders. However, with the non-file subbidders, what we do is we can de-scope them. And we do de-scope them, which means when we, and this is not a, there's a difference between a a hard bid where we're actually general contractors. Like Dan O'Connell, Fontaine is a construction manager at risk, working for the city of Springfield. So we're not a general, we are a general contractor, but we're also a construction manager. So when we buy the concrete, say, which is not a file subbid, we sit them down prior to awarding them the contract. We vet out, making sure, you know, we usually have two or three people that we work with, trade, you know, different contractors, make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck for our client, in this case, the city of Springfield. But then what we do is we sit down and we go through, you own this spec, you own that spec, you own a Springfield REO and we pause and we make sure and we have them sign an initial as just a further, we can't do that with the trade bidders, but we can do it with the non-trade bidders. And to be honest with you, we do do it with the trade bidders, although we're not supposed to. But we do try to make sure that they hear the message loud and clear that they have to adhere to these requirements. The contract, it's what we're all signing up for. So that's, that's kind of what we do behind the scenes. And we do that with full engagement with the architects, the, the Peter Garvies, they're on the phone calls so that they know that, and we mean business. And when we sign these people up, you know, we expect them to uphold their bargain to the best of their ability. If there's, if the people aren't there, they're not there. There's, there's nothing they can do about that. But we expect them to make every effort to make sure that they're there.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind, like, or you or one of your associates like to kind of move into the updates on T-Berry? And where things are, I believe, I know the project is actively moving along and I see the heavy equipment is out there. And I won't try to, I won't try to profess that I know exactly what's going on, but either Dave, Liz or Frank, one of you like to kind of jump into that subject right now, if it's appropriate?
Yeah, I can touch on that. I can, so I also have, I have the REO numbers for our projects through the end of June. I haven't seen the July numbers yet, but currently on the job site, we had early package start. So we've mobilized site contractor only at this time, just to start developing the site, installing some utilities. Frank had mentioned we have our concrete contract. Uh, Frank had mentioned we have our concrete contractor. They're gonna be next in line. Uh, they're getting mobilized next week. And just to kind of add in to a little uh detail on the Springfield residence side of things. This contractor is based out of southeastern Massachusetts, kind of Fall River area. And his plan in order to make sure that maintains those numbers is that basically there's gonna be one or two of their company guys. Who are with them all the time from that area, running the job, and then they're gonna pull the labor, general labor for the job from the local halls. So we're gonna have a lot better shot of getting residents in that sense. It's not like there's gonna be, you know, crews of guys trans. So commuting across the state every day here. So they're gonna be sourcing locally, so that's going to help our numbers as well. Um, but just to share for, like I said, for Gaglia Ducci through June twenty twenty-one. Um, before this, these numbers, they hadn't been adjusted for Gaglia Ducci hired on a a woman laborer as well. Basically, the first week of July. So our numbers for the women are kind of lacking in this report, but it's, they're gonna be jacked up. Uh, she's on a a main member of the crew every single day, but where we're at right now through the end of June, minorities sixteen point one one percent. Women, six point two two percent. Veterans, three point seven three percent. And residents, twenty seven point six zero percent. Again, this was, like I said, the one contractor, we kind of, we got him earlier, just started on site to start working and then. You know, they mobilized a bunch of the company guys and we've really started to kind of manipulate the crew to make sure that they're they're meeting these uh, these requirements. And, you know, holding them for the duration of the job.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. Any comments from the committee members? Questions, comments, observations, complaints? Tim? Are you muted if if you were trying to say something? I see you.
Yeah, there we go. Um, sorry. Uh, when when will this project be at? I mean, I guess it's getting started, but when will it be kind of at full strength? What's the, what's the ramp up and timing for that?
So for the most part, you're gonna see, so the first week when the concrete sub's on site, it's not gonna be pouring any of the concrete yet. Um, but starting in August, there's gonna be basically daily ready-mix concrete trucks starting to come to the site. Because they're gonna be wanting to place concrete either daily or every other day. And then after that large activity happens with all the concrete trucks, we're gonna move right into structural steel. So that's when you're gonna see cranes mobilized on site, lots of steel trucks being delivered. Um, just to start hoisting the steel up into the air, and then from that point, the design team will be complete with their documents. Uh, at the end of this month, which allows us to buy out the rest of the job. So we're really anticipating the full swing of this project kind of in fall. Um, basically, we're anticipating steel late October, early November, so we're gonna wanna get the plumber, the electrician going also. So it's gonna be ramping up in the next couple of months, but I said, you know, by second week of August, there's gonna be consistent activity on this site. It's gonna be a lot of concrete steel deliveries and this poor.
Great. Are we looking at a kind of a twenty-four month timeframe for the project?
So this school will be complete and ready for the kids to occupy it for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. So it's not next year, it's the following uh fall, and then from that point, we're gonna transition into the abatement and the demolition of the old building. And then the development of the site parking lot, that'll be done for June of twenty twenty-four. So it's three years all in for both phases. Um, but as of right now, yes, the school year will be twenty twenty-three.
Gotcha. And what schools will be demolished? Both of them or just one of them?
That's the Dbury school. The Homer school is not part of our contract.
Not part of your contract. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Fiori, Lindsay, do you have any comments or questions? Uh, Hope?
I don't think you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna pull in the uh our guests, uh, our, well, our resident guests, because they're always here. Uh, either Lisa or Charlie, would you guys like to chime in at this point?
Uh, I'll just add a certain, I apologize for my camera being off. Um, I'm unstable wifi. But um, we look forward to working with Fontaine and the subcontractors on the project and and look forward to helping them meet the, all of the. Uh, diversity and residency numbers.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Charlie, have any comments? Okay, I guess we're pretty much set then. Uh, anybody else got anything they want to add before cast? Release the beast and set you all free.
Sorry, Melvin.
Yes.
I was, I was muted, which um, but I just want to say, I I met with Liz this morning. I went to the site. Uh, met with the super and Frank and David uh sev- uh three weeks ago. And I'm pretty impressed at how proactive Fontaine Brothers is being. Um, on and asking me questions about the best uh, the best practices, which contractors. Uh, uh, what, who is seamless, who, you know, who should, who, you know, what what they did to to get ahead of things. And I I really look forward. I think we're gonna really do well on this project. And and we need to remind each other, this is changing the lives of people in the city who who. Uh, they're really bringing them into a middle-class life, and the work you're doing is is amazing. It's good work.
Well, thank you, Charlie. And, you know, I have no problem holding Pete, the bad actor, is accountable. Um, sometimes there might be some degree of frustration in terms of, you know, what we may want, may not be realistic or where our hands may be tied. Um, in terms of what's legal and what the law allows. Um, but at the same time, you know, I'm not paid to be a cheerleader for anybody other than the city. But um, the description of what we hearing and, you know, what I'm hearing and I, and I trust with Charlie, Lisa. And people like uh like Fiori have to say, as our partner, you know, because of their investment in what we're trying to get done. Uh, but also respect the comments and thoughts of, you know, my colleague, Tim and Lindsay and Hope Che. Um, you guys on at Fontaine, you're setting a very high standard. Uh, and I'm appreciative of that because the thing is that we we we've been doing this for so long. We know that every contractor doesn't come to us, doesn't always invite us to their site, does is not proactive in reaching out. Um, so as you set this standard, it makes it easier for uh us to. Ask or have an expectation of other players doing the right thing, and you're showing them a blueprint for how to get it done. So it limit, you know, when they come to us with the excuse of why they can't. Um, you know, we'll be able to hold you guys up, and so I I sincerely appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Uh, I thank all my colleagues for taking the time, you know, I'm not a judge of what your timeframe looks like, your schedules look like. But I want to thank you all for helping us to get through this meeting. Um, Maureen, uh, you're appreciated more than you know.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Focus Springfield has been done a yeoman's job throughout the pandemic, keeping this city running. Uh, because it's not just the REO and the city council, but every department has been leaning on them. Every public meeting, we appreciate them. Che, um, you and Hope, well, you know, sorry if I irritate you every once in a while. Um, but we can't do it without you either. And so finally, Liz, it's a pleasure to meet you this morning. Um, and I'm looking forward to uh seeing you around Springfield. It just so I hope I'm not sharing too much by saying she's, she's a Worcester girl. Uh, but uh, see, uh, we're we're uh, we're gonna make sure she gets around and see how beautiful Spadia Springfield is. And um, so if there are no other question, comments, complaints, observations, or things that I need to be said. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn with the expectation. We will be planning on meeting again next month. Uh, yeah, uh, third weekend, third Tuesday. Um, submit should be going in. Uh, maybe the steelworkers, I mean, uh, might be coming outside. Yes, my notes are correct. Um, that sounds appropriate to everybody.
Yeah, it sounds great. Yeah, good job. Thanks, everybody. Great meeting.
Have a wonderful day. Motion, second eye.
Most eye, 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 everybody. Be safe, be well. Thank you, everybody.